All right. Good evening. I'd like to call to orders the Lakewood City Council's special meeting in Lakewood, Colorado on October 17th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. For those wishing to call in tonight, that number is 720-707-2699. The Zoom webinar ID, which will work either for Internet or for the telephone number, once you call in, is 836-2082-8098. And you'll press pound twice to get into the meeting, and you'll be able to participate in the commenting sections. So before I go into roll call, just a couple of housekeeping notes. This is a reminder that we swapped our meetings, our study sessions. This would normally be a study session. This is the second hearing of our budget process. We will be back next week virtually on what would have been a regular meeting night. So we've switched that around, just FYI. We also have another meeting after this one for the Lakewood Reinvestment Authority. That one is not scheduled till 8:30. So if we do finish early, you are all welcome, if able, to go home and come back and participate, if you'd like to do that virtually. Some of us will stay here, as the public has been notified, that we will be here for the duration, and we can't start that meeting before 8:30 PM. So with that, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Paul.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Branks.
Here.
Jansen.
Here.
Mea Guerrero.
Here.
Vincent.
Here.
Strom.
Here.
Charazai.
Here.
Springsteen.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Oliver.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have it for him.
All right. Thank you. Now read our statement of conflict of interest. All the members of the City Council have their responsibility to comply with the terms of Charter 7.2B and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial, or business interest. The City Council is empowered by Charter 7.2B to agree by unanimous vote, excluding the member at issue, to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a personal, financial, or business interest. Now move into public comment, general public comment. This is the point in the meeting where the public is, you know, I don't have Pledge of Allegiance on my, I don't have the pledge on my script, but I imagine, because it's a special meeting, but we'll just go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thanks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Please be seated. Again, this is the opportunity for the public to weigh in on anything that is not on the agenda. You'll have three minutes. If you are online, please feel free to raise your hand, star nine, or request to speak. We'll ask for your name and address, or name and ward. Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. I don't have anything, or anybody who's signed up in chambers to speak. So with that, I'll ask the clerk to please read item six in the record.
Item six, second public hearing on ordinance O-2022-19, adopting a revised budget for the year 2022 for the city of Lakewood, Colorado, and further adopting the annual budget for the city for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of January 2023 and ending on December 31st, 2023, estimating the amount of money necessary to be raised by levying taxes for the year 2022 to defray the costs of municipal government for the city of Lakewood, Colorado, for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2023, and estimating the amount of money to be derived from other revenue sources, setting forth the appropriations for each fund.
Fantastic. Thank you. Now I'll now open the second public hearing on ordinance 02022-19, and I'm going to turn it over to our CFO, Ms. Holly Bjorklund, who will give us a PowerPoint. And while she's coming up, I'll remind council and the community that this is the second public hearing. As required by charter, this is the only ordinance that requires two full public hearings and is documented as such. And council has also, throughout the last month or so, submitted a lot of questions, and those are also listed on Lakewood Speaks, if you'd like to follow along. So, thank you. Welcome.
Can you hear me okay?
Can they see the presentation?
What's that?
Online.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. As the mayor said, this is the second public hearing of the city manager's proposed 2022, proposed, sorry, 2022 revised and 2023 budget. The budget is a process that is collaborative, and the effort of the City Council, Budget Nod at Board, community members, and staff to develop a plan that continues to provide quality programs and services for the community. The budget reflects the community values, priorities, and goals that are established by the City Council through the annual planning process. So tonight, we will be covering the highlights of the proposed 2022 revised budget and the 2023 budget. And then we'll have the opportunity for questions. I'll start with the revenue by fund type. For the total city, this bar chart, these bar charts show the 2019 actuals, 2020 actuals, 2021 actuals, 2022 budget, 2022 revised, and 2023 budget. For the general fund, which are the blue bars, you can see the dip in revenue of $9.3 million between 2019 and 2020 actuals. And this is primarily due to COVID. The increase of $12.8 million from 2020 to 2021 is due to the sales tax coming back and the recovery of COVID. Then the increase from 2022 budget to 2022 revised and the 2023 budget is primarily driven by inflation and a small amount of growth. For the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, which are the red bars, there was $10.8 million received in 2021 and $10.8 received in 2022. The capital fund, which are the green bars, have the same sales tax revenue trends as the general fund. The enterprise funds, which are the yellow bars, show moderate growth. The special revenue funds, which are the brown bars, you can see an uptick in 2020 actuals due to $12.3 million for CARES Act funding. In 2022 and 2023, there are grant opportunities being explored, which is why the revenue jumps from 24 million to 32.6 million dollars. The staff are continually exploring other ways to fund projects and services. In summary, the most significant changes in the city's revenue estimates are the return of sales tax, inflation, and This shows you the 2023 expenses by department. You can see that Public Works is 27%, which is primarily assets. Police is 24%, which is primarily people. And Community Resources is 19%, and that's about half people, half assets. And we have non-departmental, that's 15%. And Other Departments is less than 4%, which adds up to 15% of the total. So looking at 2022 revised, we generally do not have large changes in the current year. However, since there's been a lot of things that have changed, we decided to provide a example of what is happening within the 2022 revised and give you the highlights of those. So sales and use tax, $17 million increase, and that's due to inflation. Grants in intergovernmental revenue increased by $9 million, which is that grant opportunities that I mentioned just a moment ago. Charges for services, that's the continued interest in the golf course, courses, as well as a return to community resources programs. And so that's a total of $28 million increase in the 2022 budget. On the expense side, we see actually a decrease for vacancy savings, and that's due to the staffing difficulties of keeping staff and hiring staff. And then we have land acquisitions, which there was a purchase for parklands with Tabor funds for 3.5 million. Capital projects, a re-timing of projects, so it's not an increase, it's actually changing the timing of it, 8.2. Gasoline, as you know, the prices are much higher now, so we had to increase the budget to 3.3 million. So in total, that's expense increase of 11 million. On this slide, you see the start of the significant infrastructure investment to address the aging of infrastructure challenges the city will be having in the future, as we've discussed previously. This includes the spending of ARPA funds and additional $10 million investment that is funded by General Fund 2020 expense savings. And these are the specific projects which add up to $30.7 million. Staffing is assessed and evaluated during the budget process and before any employee is hired. In the 2022 budget, there was a request for a minimum amount of unfunded positions to be funded. During the budget planning process this year, there were 45.5 unfunded positions. After an extensive review process of the staffing needs, the 2023 proposed budget is requesting 32.6 funded positions to sustain services with the current needs of the community. It's also recommended that 10 positions remain vacant and funded. The remaining three positions were taken out of the budget. There is a proposed COLA in Q4 to support retaining and recruiting staff in a difficult staffing market. This slide, on the right-hand side, you see the sales tax revenue by industry. You can see the largest is the retail industry, which is 47%. And this is for both brick and mortar, as well as out of the liquid, which is primary online-type sales tax. We also have restaurants at 15%, groceries at 15%, and groceries includes non-food items and marijuana. Services at 9%, utilities 8%, and other at 6%. Oops. Go back. On the left-hand side of this slide, you can see the change in growth from January through July for 2021 to compared to this year in 2022. We have a growth of 10%, but 9% of that is inflation, so the only real growth we have is 1%. Next slide shows you an example of a residence of $600,000, and you can see the distribution of where property tax goes to. 5% goes to the city, JFCO gets 26%, school districts get 54%, West Metro Fire gets 15%. This graph shows the general fund balance, beginning with 2021 actuals through 2027 forecast. You can see spending, the ARPA dollars and the one-time projects will considerably reduce the fund balance. However, the general fund is projected to maintain the minimum 10% reserve. What makes up the 10% reserve is 3% that is required by Tabor, and 7% which is set by the city. In 2017, the voters approved retaining $12.5 million for a table refund to be used for parklands and open space, infrastructure and transportation, and police. For the remaining years through 2025, a third of Tabor refunds will be allocated to open space and parkland, a third to infrastructure and transportation, and a third to police. As you can see on this slide, we have the refunded amount, which is the blue bars, and the retained amount, which is the red bars, which are the funds to get transferred to the Tabor fund, only for specific Tabor projects. So 2014 through 2016, you can see we refunded. You can see the $12.5 million I just mentioned in 2017, and then the additional amounts in the later This slide is a review of what we have done during the budget process. We met with the Budget Nod at Board from May through July. Shane O'Neill, our budget manager, coordinated the input and discussions with departments in the meetings with the city manager from July through August. We had a detailed presentation during the study session on September 19th, and the Budget Nod at Board met to discuss the budget on September 28th. The first public hearing was on October 3rd, and the second and final hearing is this evening. I'd like to thank the Budget Nod at Board, City Council, the city manager, the department directors, and staff for the time spent on the annual budget. I will now, oh, sorry. Now, I will talk about the audit, the Budget Nod at Board members. To wrap it up, I'd like to introduce the Budget Nod at Board members. We have the City Council Wendy, City Councilor Wendy Strom, who is the chair of the Budget Nod at Board. The citizen members are Christopher Scott, Marla McDaniel, Deborah Hinspark. And the other council members are Mayor Protam, Sharon Vincent, City Councilor Rebecca Stewart. And I also wanted to say thank you to all of you for the questions I've received, as well as the questions I've received from the Budget Nod at Board. Now, Councilor Strom, as the chair of the Budget Nod at Board, would like to make a few comments.
Thank you. Yes, as the mayor pointed out, as well as Ms. Bjorklund, this has been a very long, multi-step conversation. I personally am very excited to not be schluffing this 350-page book around anymore. There were some things that I wanted to go over for our listeners tonight. For those of you that are out there that haven't been actively involved in these conversations, there, we've gotten a number of questions, I would say, you know, the Budget Nod at Board, questions and feedback about what exactly are we spending money on? This book is very large, the numbers are big, and it feels more theoretical than full of substance. So what I wanted to do is take a few minutes to go through some of the specifics that we have prioritized within the budget that resonate with some of the requests that our community members have made, as well as some of the priorities that were set forth in our council retreat early this year. So what I decided to do is to break it up into four primary categories. For brevity's sake tonight, we won't go into spending in all categories. We'll just hit on these big four, the ones that I think most of our council members hear the most from our community, and that we find ourselves discussing the most often. So as far as, the first one I wanted to point out regarding homelessness response, what is included within this budget, that's not easy to see in this large book, is an interdepartmental homelessness response that includes the Public Works, Parks, Police, and Planning Departments to address the needs of our unhoused and to approve our response times and cleanup efforts. That's a cry that we've heard from a number of our residents out there, and we're very excited to start to introduce more of a collaborated effort from across departments within the city. Within the homeless response, it also includes funding allocated to a housing navigation center that will be both housing and wraparound services to help our unhoused residents find pathways to self-sufficiency. At present, we here in Lakewood don't have housing shelter, homeless shelters. This navigation center will include both short-term temporary shelter space, as well as long-term supportive housing that will help our unhoused residents get off the streets and get back on their feet. Secondly, in the topic of safety on our streets, in supporting our community's goals of improving connectivity and safety on our streets, some of the items included in this budget are pedestrian upgrades at numerous traffic signals that are being replaced, increasing sidewalk connectivity with an additional 4.4 miles of sidewalk, and/or shared-use paths to be completed or begin design next year, projects around the city to improve safety for all users of our roads, including in some locations, like on the W line bike path, adding lighting and installing raised tabletop crossings. And then while it's not included in this particular budget, I thought it worth mentioning that city staff is also working on developing concepts for future design of protected bike lanes on garrison between Alameda and Colfax. Third topic relating to public safety. As our community's needs for the police department have broadened, this year's budget responds to that. It starts with expanding what we do within the police department and adding to staff in a way that takes some of the administrative burdens off our sworn agents, so that they are more available to our community to address the crime that they are specifically trained for. Some of the budget items here include adding several new support roles for our sworn agents to better tailor our responses and increase efficiency, increase the number of our co-responders in mental health and medical, and increasing victim advocate support. And then moving, we are moving next year into our third year of the LEED program. The LEED program increases the efficiency of our court system and is host to a number of collaborative partnerships between law enforcement, DA's office, treatment providers aimed at getting residents treatment they need, when agents are responding to calls arising from substance abuse, mental illness, and extreme poverty. And then the fourth topic tonight around sustainability. This budget includes continuing to convert our streetlights to LEDs for energy and cost efficiency. I say continuing, we're not done. It's an ongoing process, but we're continuing to work in that direction. Also in the direction of vehicle electrification, we had two vehicles ordered this year, and seven have been identified for replacement next year. We also have funding for full-time staff dedicated to ensuring that the city is not overwatering in our parks. Water is a big topic we've heard about this year, and doing the best that we can to make sure that we're conserving all that we can, and continuing to improve as we go. And then also continuing to grow the Tree Canopy project, increasing the health of our local environment and reducing energy use. So those are some of the big topics that are not as easy to see in this book. There are a lot more. For anybody that wants to learn more specifics with regards to what those are included, that is, as the mayor mentioned earlier, available on Lakewood Speaks. If you go into tonight's meeting, you will see a list of all the questions that came across from both the Budget Nod at Board, as well as council, and all of the answers that do elaborate more, especially like within, you know, the multimodal safety and sustainability, there's some very easy bullet points. And then separately, if we are interested in learning more about the improvements in the projects themselves, there's also included in that document something called the Capital Improvement and Preservation Plan that does go into a deeper dive within all of these projects. So that was my comments today, based on questions and feedback we've been hearing from people over the last few weeks of, yes, I see the numbers, but what does that actually mean to me in my everyday life? So with that, I will go ahead and hand it over to any of our Budget and Audit Board members that do want to make a comment in addition.
Okay. I don't see any of our citizen members. I know they were here last, for the last hearing, but I don't see any of them on with us.
Okay. Well, then with that, I will say thank you to our Budget Nod at members. This has been, it's been a lot of conversations that we've had, especially our residents that are setting aside time in their own private lives to be a part of this conversation. Their feedback is valuable. So thank you to the three of you, especially that are participating. And then also, a thank you universally to staff. I know you guys in the finance department have been so patient and gracious with your time answering all of our questions and putting this together to begin with, but all of our departments sitting down and listening to council priorities, as well as community feedback on how we can improve our city. So thank you to everybody, and I'll hand over the floor.
Great. Nicely done. Thank you for the summary, and I echo the thanks and gratitude for everybody's help in getting us to this evening. So the public hearing is open. I don't have anybody who's wished to speak in chambers. Is there anybody who wishes to speak online on the proposed 2022-19 ordinance? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. I will now open it up for council. Let's start with questions, and then we can go into comments after the motion is made. So are there questions Okay. Mayor Protam, I'll ask for a motion.
Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of ordinance O-2022-19 on second and final reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any comments? Counselor Jansen. Councillor Jansen.
Thank you, mayor. So I had a bunch, but thank you, Wendy, you kind of answered a lot of my questions. So one of my comments was, the last budget presentation by staff included a lot of commentary about the Taxpayers' Bill of Rights taber, and I want to go on record for myself now that I don't agree with removing any part or parts of taber in the city of Lakewood after the sunset or anytime in the future. I believe it's time to let the taxpayers keep their future refunds. And like all of our citizens and businesses, we're being hit by crime and inflation, and I think the city needs to tighten its belt. And I'd like to know, has a past city council in the last several years or less been given a presentation about using a zero-based budgeting in the city of Lakewood? If not, can we explore, can we explore using this budgeting technique? That's all I've got.
Okay. Ms. Bjorklund.
Oh, we haven't specifically talked to the council about a zero-based, you can hear me, right? Okay. We haven't specifically talked to council about a zero-based budgeting, but our process is similar to that in terms of looking at the details of everything that's in the budget. And we're doing, we've done an extensive process for that just with going through COVID. And when we had to make a $17 million reduction, we went through that process. Then we also, as we're moving into this new world of new needs and things are shifting, we've started making that assessment as well. So it's not specifically the definition of zero-based budgeting that's a specific process, but it's very similar to that.
Councillor Springsteen.
Well, I, you know, I just wanted to make the point again before we vote that when the budget is supposed to reflect all of council's priorities and concerns about the city based on what constituents talk to us about, when council members are specifically and purposely excluded from the annual planning retreat and from having a place at the table in terms of having a real discussion about priorities and where to take the city. And I, I mean, in my case, I feel like, you know, excluding the one person of color on this council from any participation in contributing to those priorities is excluding a whole portion of our city's priorities. But it's not just me. There are other members of this council who feel the same way, that they had priorities that should have been considered in this budget, and they were shut down in every direction they went. And so I don't see how we can be expected to legitimately and responsibly vote on a budget that does not reflect the priorities of this city and our constituents. And so just a couple of examples would be, you know, when I asked about how this city prioritizes a part of budget toward increasing inclusivity in the city of Lakewood, especially in our hiring practices, when I found out that only 1.7% of full-time staff is African-American and 12.3% Hispanic, which was, which does not reflect the demographics in Ward 3 especially. And then I asked for a percentage on how many of those were women. And although I was at first given the runaround and criticized for simply asking a simple question like that, I did receive that data. And it turns out only, there are only four African-American women who are full-time staff in the city of Lakewood. There are only 35 Latinas. And there are almost twice as many men on staff as women in this city. And this explains so completely why our city does not become more inclusive as seems to be, as, as people pay lip service is one of our goals, when folks don't want to move somewhere where they're not represented. And, you know, you have these discriminatory hiring practices run rampant. And in light of recent events on the Los Angeles City Council, I think it's imperative for us to, to, to arrest these kind of discriminatory attitudes and practices, especially in our city. And so, you know, in light of things like that, I don't feel comfortable with this budget. I feel that I'm being told to rubber stamp something that I'm not allowed to have a say in because of systemic oppression in this city. And so I'm going to be a no on this.
Councillor Abel.
Thank you, mayor. I agree with the diversity comments. For the most part, I think we need to reach out and try to find a way to make our workforce a lot more diverse. But I have a couple of concerns about what's in the budget. And I brought it up last week, or two weeks ago, that the capital improvements, non-departmen, I'm sorry, the non-departmental expenditures have taken quite a jump. And I was told it's because of the North, I'm sorry, the Drainage, Dry Gulch, North Dry Gulch. And I'm, but we have no details. We don't know whether South, or whether Dry Gulch itself is part of this $17 million set-aside project. We don't know whether it's going underground or overground, above ground, or, or just a ditch through the North Side of Colfax there. And because of that, that if we approve this, if we approve the budget with that money in it, we will hear later, oh, well, you approved it. No matter what we do out there, you approved it by approving the budget. I would like to see, and I assume as a sidelight that the Broncos $3 million we're going to get is not in the budget, and that's because it'll be handled as a supplemental appropriation later. Thank you. So that's my suggestion with this. Until we know what we're getting, I'm not voting for a pig in a poke. I think we should have this drainageway funding put off until we know how much we're going to need. And we're not going to know that until we know how we're going to design the project and how much property we're going to have to take. So I would suggest that we handle the North Dry Gulch and, and Dry Gulch funding, if that's part of it, as a supplemental appropriation when we have some details in front of us. The details had already been put in place by our previous council, and I'm told that, well, that's, we're going to take another look at it, put new eyes on it. I think that's because it turned out to be not the project that some of the friends of City Hall wanted, but the projects, or the project that our former Public Works Director, Jay Hutchison, thought would be the best for the community. How many thousands of dollars did we spend on Mr. Hutchison's interviews with property owners and business owners along the route of the drainageway improvements? And that's just going to go to waste because we need new eyes to look at it? Well, I'm not going to vote to approve anything that is so poorly detailed as to give carte blanche to whoever makes these decisions. Because once we vote for it, folks, it's a done deal. Thank you.
So I'm not sure if we have somebody that wants to give an update on the North Dry Gulch or is prepared.
And that's my point. We're just not going to get those details.
Well, do you think our Public Works Director is up to speed? I mean, I think that we have about $32 million is the estimate of underground channeling, which is in the design phases, which has been presented at, I think, WCCA at least twice. And construction is starting, and I am the Chair of the Mile High Flood District, and we've been banking those dollars as well for this project. So I think there is more detail, maybe not available this evening.
We actually have our Public Works Director available online, and he can make some comments in response to the questions. So I'll remind you, this is Max Kirschbaum. And if we could bring him to the main screen, I'd appreciate it. Again, this is Max Kirschbaum, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchison. Good evening, Mr. Kirschbaum, welcome.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, all members of council, and to councillor Abel's questions on the project for North Dry Gulch. We do have a presentation that will be coming to council on November 28th. The primary purpose of that evening will be to seek your approval for a notice of intent to acquire property for the first piece of that North Dry Gulch project, which will occur on 14th Avenue. The project is broken down into multiple phases, and it's integrated along with other works to include, to try to coordinate the timing of the different phases with the Colfax Avenue Safety Improvements Project. So it's being phased in such a manner for construction. We're at, we're still at the fairly early stages of design. At this point, we met as recently as last week with the Mile High Flood District and their financial experts to look at methods for continued funding with Mile High Flood District. All of that, of course, would come back to city council, and, but your first opportunity maybe to see it in presentation form would be November 28th. And we do believe that there is adequate funding at this time that would get us through the first phase of that construction.
Councillor Abel.
We have millions of dollars proposed.
I'm sorry, we have millions of dollars proposed in this budget we're passing tonight. Once it's passed, can we back off of it? Once it's passed, it's a done deal. That's my experience with previous budgets. And we're not going to find out until four weeks or so from tonight what we're buying. I just, I think we could hold off and make it a supplemental appropriation after we hear what you have in mind. So.
Mayor Paul, I can answer just a piece of that to elaborate a little more on what Mr. Kirschbaum spoke of. So this is actually coming to city council by way of an ordinance. First reading will be on the 28th of November, second reading December 12th. So there will be a, a public hearing on the 12th, awaiting your approval or non-approval of this particular part of the project. First reading 28th of November, second reading, final reading December 12th.
May I follow up? So you're telling me that this money is not committed and won't be spent unless we approve the ordinance presented to us on November 28th?
Yes. That's what we're saying. And that goes for several of the programs within the budget. Those actual approvals will come in front of you for approval with much more detail once they are ready for approval. So yes.
So if, if council approves in November or in December, then that will resolve the issue of a past council's that will resolve the issue of a past council's decision being tweaked by the current council. Because you can't make an ordinance that is incumbent on future councils to abide by.
So I, if I remember correctly, the previous council had the two options of open channel or under-channel or kind of a hybrid. What was set forth, what is being designed for, is what that previous council did, which was the least invasive to the community based upon, I think the open channel was going to take 60-plus businesses, whereas this under-channel is going to take very few, but will still be acquisitions and right-of-way is needed. So that was my understanding of how we proceeded with that. And then this continues on the design-build phase, building out in conjunction with the other projects.
Yeah, and that's fine. I just wanted to make sure we're not beholden to anything if we pass this tonight and then find out we don't like what's on the menu for the 28th. And it is encouraging that we are looking at what the original plan was. The details of that undergrounding might be different, but thank you.
And, and just to, to add to that, this will be one of the largest public work projects the city's had, so I would imagine there will be a lot of council engagement as well as public engagement, because this will take multi-years. And I think, again, is upwards of 30 million. It may, may come in lower, I'd hope, but it's a big one. So, and it's so meaningful for the whole corridor, too.
Thank you. And I think it's time we get this thing done, at least some relief for the folks on Colfax. Thank you. And I'm glad to know that we're not going to be taking 60 properties. We'll take parts of properties. Thank you both.
Councillor Springsteen.
Yeah, so I, I recalled something that I brought up at last year's budget meeting, which was an article I read in Colorado Newsline about the 25 largest municipalities in Colorado and police budgets. And so we come in, and we're talking about cities over 30,000 residents. So this article said that we come in second to Centennial in terms of, and we're talking about 2020 here, so it might have changed, but in terms of general funds that go to the police department, so 45% of our budget of general funds during that year went in that regard. And then we came in third in terms of police expenditure per capita, second to Grand Junction and Anklewood. And I mean, this, this could, may or may not be a good thing. But my thing is, in order to have trust from the community in what we are putting in our budget, in what we are voting on, we have to be able to show the community what the results are. And so there are many sides of, and I'm just giving the example of the police part of our budget, but there's many sides of that because a lot of people are very concerned about whether we're effectively fighting crime. They think that crime is high, and they want to make sure that we're addressing it effectively. Other people are concerned about overpolicing or putting people into the system who don't belong there, for example, to increase revenues and to not really give people the services they need. So what I'm saying is that there are many different views on this issue and how we're addressing it, but the point is to, to just simply hand the money over in our budget without us as a council putting more of a requirement in terms of explaining why our budget is the way it is, I think is irresponsible. And I would like to see us start this budget process, you know, in discussions as a council, not just on committees, but earlier in the year, so we can address these priorities. And that's further reason that, that I And that's further reason that, that I don't think, I don't feel comfortable with this.
Okay, counsel, any other comments before we take a vote? I would just echo, in my 15 years now, this has been such an incredible process, and you've really worked hard to engage not only, I think, council, but our citizens' board. And I really want to thank them for their input. And so, Ms. Bjorkland, thank you to you and your team, Ms. Hodgson, to all your directors and all the staff. I know this starts all the way at the bottom and works its way up. And there's a lot of wonderful things in this budget. These things aren't certainly perfect, but if you do look at the details, they do follow the council's core community values, and it is built upon council's goals for the year. I'll throw out another one that's of interest to one member, dog parks. And you're going to see potentially three more dog parks put in throughout the city. So when we do come together for these opportunities, council does set those priorities, and therefore those things start to follow through. So I'm happy to support this, happy to see it move forward, and it's a good one. So with that, I'd ask that council please cast their votes. Fantastic. And that passes eight aye and three nay, being Jansen, Springsteen, and Oliver. Okay, is there any general business as pertains to this meeting tonight? Okay, we'll go to an executive report. Ms. Hodgson?
Yes, thank you. Very briefly, I wanted to make sure everyone was invited to the upcoming Veterans Fair. We've done this annually, and it will be held at the Elks Lodge, 1455 Newland Street. It's a wonderful opportunity of people, for people who have served, both currently and formerly, to, to be more accustomed or to be familiar with some of the services that are offered to them, for men and women to come together, just to have time to be together. So this is, again, a Veterans Fair, October 20th, which I believe is this Thursday, at the Elks Lodge, 1455 Newland. Everyone is welcome and certainly encouraged to attend. Some good news, the city of Lakewood has been selected to participate in the XL-owned EV fast charging program. What that means is the city's identified four parking spaces in front of Lakewood Cultural Center that have Level 3 EV chargers installed. XL will pay for all the installation costs and will also maintain and operate the charging stations. So that's good news. Staff is currently working with XL, and I'll have more detail when that detail is available. And I, I have, finally, earlier, a couple of meetings ago, I told you about the Lakewood Community Outreach Court, and we had kind of a misstart on that, the date, because we're trying to solidify a location. The date now is December 1st, and we're working diligently on those details. Once those details are hammered out, I'm happy to be able to announce more, more information around this particular court in the community. So thank you, that's it.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Hodgson. Much appreciated. So go ahead, and we'll go with any ward updates or reports. Does any ward want to go first? Counselors, Chair Zai and Abel.
Thank you. On November 5th, our ward meeting will be at Holy Shepherd Church at 9:30 till 11:00. We'll have our city clerk to explain the intricacies and reasons for redistricting our wards after the census. So it's, it's, it's an interesting process and multi-level, so I think it'll be very interesting. We'll also have an open mic at the end of, after the presentation and the questions for our clerk. And if there's anything else you'd like to add?
Yes. Yeah, thank you, Counselor Abel. Two things. One, point of privilege, again, I would just say that as a person of color up here on the dais, and as a first-generation Iranian-American, I want to recognize that this is the fifth week that young people, women and men, have been standing in the streets fighting for their freedom in Iran. And so I just want to recognize that and say that I stand in solidarity with that. I also would recognize, too, that if you're looking for a way to purchase a pumpkin to support the community, that the Mile High Church in Ward 1 on the corner of Alameda and Garrison is hosting the Habitat for Humanity Pumpkin Patch. So, and that's it.
Thank, thank you, Counselor. Always appreciate you sharing the, the personal side. Ward two.
Yes, a brief, brief report. One is that there is the Two Creeks Neighborhood Association Annual Meeting, which is tomorrow evening at, at 6:30. Thank you, Counselor Vincent, at Mount Air Church on Benton 14th. And that, I think, is going to be really a very compelling agenda with issues around RTD, some things about public safety, all getting talked about, really like very packed and, and interesting meeting, I expect that to be. And then we are not having a ward meeting this Wednesday because we had our shared mega-meeting earlier this month, so we're not doing this ward meeting. Of course, as always, without a ward meeting, feel free to reach out in any, in any way that you need to if you have questions, comments, or concerns in general. And then lastly, the 40 West Arts District Annual Fundraiser is this Saturday. I will be there. It should be a really great time. There's going to be, I think, dancers and like some performers, and there's going to be cocktails. I think it's going to be like a really excellent event and a great way to support our growing arts community here in Lakewood. And you can still buy tickets. Go to the 40 West website, which I do, by Googling 40 West Arts District in Lakewood, and then clicking on the link at the top.
Thank you, Counselor. Mayor Protem. Ward three, Counselor Springsteen, go ahead.
I'm happy to have Counselor Stewart go first.
Thanks. The only report that I have is to just let the public know that Belmar is doing a kids' trick-or-treat event all throughout the district on Saturday, October 29th, from 3:00 to 5:00. Costumes welcome and encouraged, obviously, but should be a good time.
Yeah, so I don't really have much of a report. I continue to be relegated to Zoom in everything I do. But just wanted to put a shout out for solidarity and humanity, again, given some of the news we've had about other councils, such as that in Los Angeles. I wish that we could stand together more in our sort of approach to things in this city. Thanks.
Ward four, Counsel Oliver. Okay, nothing. Ward five. Jansen?
Well, I went for a walk today down at Stone House, and I met some constituents. And the first thing I heard was, guess what? My car got stolen. So again, we're still having issues. But shining light, next door to my house is a, a place where they've been having issues. And our wonderful police department has been coming up and policing that and making sure that no one's, they've been coming in at 1:00 and 2:00 and 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock in the morning to make sure that the businesses there are safe. So that's, that's good. I'm, I'm glad to see that. And our ward meeting is going to be on November 5th, and we're going to be talking about economic development. And Mr. Smith might, are you coming?
Oh, yes, I am there.
He's going to be coming to our ward meeting and talking about some new things that are going to be happening in Lakewood, and we're really excited for that. Thank you. Counselor Strom?
No report.
Thanks.
Okay. So it is election season. Ballots should be hitting your mailbox, and I believe we'll have a Dropbox here as well. It's, it's open, so it's ready to go. So engage there. If you have any issues, please reach out to the county clerk's office, and they can be of assistance there. I was thrilled to see the Lakewood Police Department posted today that Agent Ashley Ferris was the 2021 Law Enforcement Officer of the Year. And just so incredible to see what wonderful men and women we have. Sergeant Test is here with us tonight, just keeping an eye. So we appreciate all that they do, day in and day out, for our community. And I will conclude there. A lot of fun things going on in the city, and we will adjourn. And if you don't want to come back at 8:30, please tune in to us virtually, and we'll have our LRA meeting going forward with our new members as well. So we'll adjourn at seven, at 6:55 PM. Thank you for everybody's hard work and preparation.